Supervisor Lopez.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to head into item two, which is a presentation by the Community Foundation from Monterey County, a collaborative effort on collaborative efforts to address the COVID-19 pandemic locally. For this presentation, we're going to go to Dan Baldwin, who's joined by Erica Montadamas, also from the Community Foundation.
Uh, Supervisor Lopez, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Good, thank you. So I will be brief and, uh, because I know, uh, and perhaps save more time for answering questions that might come up. I do want to take it, uh, the opportunity to congratulate Supervisor Parker for her long career and thank her, uh, for her just tireless dedication to the people of Monterey County. So, thank you Supervisor Parker. Uh, we're gonna, uh, just, I know there are a lot of people, uh, that the supervisors, you all know who we are, what we do, but there are a lot of people from the public, um, that are dialed in here. And so I'm going to give just a bit of a, start with a bit of an overview about the Community Foundation that will go very quickly. Uh, normally I, I, you know, my just scan right by these, like the vision statement and the mission statement, but today they, it really struck me, uh, what we're here to talk about, a vision statement of healthy, safe, vibrant communities, uh, a mission statement that includes to inspire philanthropy, but then also to be a catalyst for strengthening communities throughout Monterey County. So, so I think that's really the, at the heart of what it is we're trying to speak to. So, the Community Foundation today, you know, who are we? We're a, we're a grant maker. We're a collection of charitable funds. Funds have been put here, uh, by people in their lifetime or through their estates. And we also work with a lot of, uh, community-based organizations, nonprofits, uh, on, uh, to manage some of their reserve funds. The types of funds that we have are donor-advised funds, estate gifts, which, which create a wide variety of funds. We work with charitable remainder trusts and charitable gift annuities. Um, and we're real, we're stewards of all of these assets, but we're also stewards of, of donor intent. And we try to, uh, construct our organization and have funds that can reach into every part of Monterey County and provide as much beneficial impact as we can. We've, we've become the largest grant maker on the central coast. We will grant around $27 million in 2020. Uh, 1.4 million of that is in scholarships. Uh, last year's Monterey County Gives campaign reached $5.4 million. Uh, we will actually surpass that by end of day today. And so, uh, yeah, so we will be, uh, this year will, will by far set a record. And I think that's actually, um, uh, a recognition on the part of, of the donor community in Monterey County of about how 2020 is different and that our nonprofits are out there on the front lines. Um, a lot of them have lost revenue streams. Uh, they need our support and it is really now being reflected through, uh, this campaign, which, you know, by end of day today will actually set a new record. And we haven't even gotten into the part of, next week is when the big giving really lands. So it's going to be a, a really wonderful year for Monterey County Gives and the benefit to our nonprofit community. So we step out of the role of grant maker quite often. We take some community leadership, uh, opportunities, uh, get ourselves engaged. We've done that with homelessness, affordable housing. Uh, Erica Montadamas was, uh, our representative working with Rosemary on the, um, 2020 census. And we, we do it through disaster relief funds, either fire funds and this year the COVID relief fund. We have total assets of about $340 million and we have about 575 charitable funds. So our COVID-19, um, response, we started a fund March 16th. I got a call from Steve John at the Monterey Peninsula Foundation, who we partner with a lot, and they pledged the first $200,000 into the fund. Relief fund, it doesn't have $4 million. It's raised $4 million. Uh, I'd, I'd like it if it still had a $4 million balance, but, and we've granted about 3.2 million. Uh, we still, um, promote the fund and we have a few donors that are still aggressively giving into the fund. And so, you know, the, this is part of why we're here today. This is unfolding in real time. And, and we made the decision in the spring, uh, that we didn't know where this was going, how it was going to turn out. And people were really, really suffering. And so we got money out the door and rather than hold money back and just hope that, that donors would be responsive, um, as this continued to unfold. And that has been the case. So we've had over 700 donors. We, we've attracted money from statewide funders like the Packard Foundation, uh, the, uh, California Endowment. Uh, our, our donor advisors have stepped up in a, in a very big way. Uh, so far, we've made 127 grants. They touch areas like food security, rental assistance and financial need, PPE for medical workers. One million of the relief fund actually has come from within the Community Foundation, uh, either from donor advisors or from, from, uh, other internal sources that we would have. And then our donor advisors have granted, and this was actually even because we've made some grants since we put this together, um, over a million dollars, um, for COVID activities straight from their funds that they did not put into the relief fund. And I want to make this clear because this could affect today's discussion with the COPA proposal. Um, we waive all fees, um, related to, um, COVID activities. So if the proposal, the COPA proposal goes through and it's, and it's deemed that an appropriate method is to utilize the Community Foundation, um, there would be no fee. We, that's our operating revenues, our fees that we charge on funds, but we waive all fees for anything, um, disaster-related and certainly this year for COVID-related funds. So how do, we, we have formed-
Dan, can I interrupt you for just one second? I just want to give our interpreter the opportunity to once again share that the interpretation is now available. I know we were having some technical difficulties at the top of the meeting. So I'm going to turn to her for just a second and ask her to let the community know that Spanish translation is now available at the bottom of the screen.
Buenas tardes. Un recordatorio que la interpretación en español se puede conseguir vía Zoom presionando el icono del mundo y seleccionando lenguaje en español.
Thank you, Dan. I apologize.
No, no worries. Uh, I think this is a vital service. And, um, so the Community Foundation, uh, uh, through a variety of conversations, agreed to, uh, step in and create a collaborative that would, uh, be multi-sector and county-wide. It would include county government, municipal governments, um, agriculture, hospitality, the hospitals, uh, the community-based organizations and, and philanthropy. And so we held a convening of this group on November 20. There was nothing formal or official yet. We just wanted to kind of pitch the idea of, well, uh, is, would a collaborative add value? Uh, we don't want to be just like the next thing. We want it to be something that could, um, really be useful. Uh, we had over 80 participants and nobody dropped off the call in the hour and a half. It was, it was really amazing. And more than 50 people out of that 80 and a few others that were not able to attend have actually, um, joined on to be part of this multi-sector collaborative. So we are moving with great speed. As we all know, there, the urgency is in real time. It is, it is unfolding, um, all the time. Uh, so even since November 20 and knowing that there was a holiday in there, we, the Community Foundation has hired Consensus Building Institute to support the coordination structure, structure of the collaborative. This is being paid for by the Community Foundation. So there'll be, you know, no, um, funding request or anything like that. Uh, our, the consultant, the lead consultant is Gina Bartlett, who has successfully worked with, uh, with, uh, people in county government and particularly agriculture on some water-related, um, issues. And so she has strong relationships in Monterey County. Um, Gina has already interviewed 12 to 15 stakeholders, um, helped organize the structure you're going to see later. Uh, um, Erica and I meet with her minimally once a day, sometimes more. And it is, uh, it is really, she's done a tremendous job and really helped, um, accelerate this. Um, we are here to enhance and build upon existing efforts. One of the things that we, um, we all know is that whether it's agriculture, whether it's the county or Monterey's Health Department, whether it's the hospitals, whether it's COPA and CCA, whomever it is, everyone has been working very, very hard. And everyone's been working with, with, with great sincerity, using a lot, utilizing a lot of best practices. But, um, it felt like there hasn't been a lot of alignment and there hasn't been a, um, you know, a coordinating body to make sure that all these efforts, um, tied well together and that then had the ability to identify gaps. And, um, and I'll talk more about that in just a little bit. Um, I, there's been great partnership with, um, with county and Monterey staff. I just want, I want to, you know, really get that out there. Uh, particularly Charles and Elsa and, and others of your leadership team have been very wonderful to work with. So the purpose is a county-wide multi-sector collaboration, uh, of existing and, and maybe, you know, needed efforts that we'll find, um, addressing COVID-19 and its impacts on our community and advancing a coordinated action plan driven by science and best practices in public health and equity. Equity, as we all know, is, is key to this because it also addresses perhaps solutions that we can think about going forward, uh, even when we are through this particular pandemic. Uh, we'll identify gaps and then we'll leverage resources and develop programs that will then go after those gaps. The goal, it really is a tangible goal, reduction of the number of COVID-19 infections with priority on the disproportionately impacted healthy places index. And if we can do that, you know, the other benefits will follow about the economy, about, um, uh, you know, uh, schools reopening and, and that, that will just be a natural outgrowth of attacking this. And, um, and so, so this is our goal. And it is, um, very consistent with the county's disparate impact work. So why equity? Uh, COVID-19 is exposed inequities in most of our vulnerable neighborhoods, namely the lack of healthcare, childcare, crowded housing, obviously a very big, and the digital divide in terms of people being able to access information and even have their kids do distance learning. Um, COVID-19 infections have thrived in large part due to crowded housing, economic insecurity, uh, prevents, uh, proper quarantine by low wage, by wage workers. Um, the equity metric to fight COVID-19 makes clear the need to focus efforts on the communities disproportionately impacted because of longstanding structural inequities. Many have expressed the need for coordinated effort and thus are collaborative. Um, Erica, there. So there is a structure. This has all been formed just in the last two and a half weeks, uh, to three weeks after we brought on, uh, uh, Consensus Building Initiative, uh, Institute, excuse me. Uh, so we have, we have four core groups, an outreach and support services team, communication and marketing, which by the way is having their first meeting on Wednesday. Uh, so, so, uh, they're moving at great speed. Science and best practices advisory group, resources and funding. Uh, I'll be facilitating, you know, slash chairing, uh, resources and, and funding. So what we're straight, what we're striving for is collaborative governance team, shared decision-making made up of partners for the, of, for implementation, sets direction, negotiates action plan, uh, garners resources, creates accountability for implementation and evaluates data, adjusts approaching and, uh, continues with the coordinating committee. I want to say one thing, one outgrowth here is that the proposal you're going to hear today from COPA has already been presented to the collaborative and, um, and has been endorsed. So already now, one of the benefits of this collaborative is that a major initiative, it is not its own, you know, for lack of a better word, sort of siloed initiative. It is now aligned, um, with other best practices that are, that are represented within the collaborative. So, so, uh, our epidemiologists, our ag workers, as Jack was making his presentation to the collaborative, in the chat box, they were all chiming in about how they would interact and network with this. So, so, uh, this is not, you know, to sway your vote, but just to let you know that there, there is actually a benefit already occurring, um, from the creation of this collaborative. So there is a governance team, uh, and governance is, you know, it's a, it's a lowercase L as, in terms of, it's a lowercase G. It's not a legal structure. It's, it's just an agreed-upon methodology of oversight. And so there's no separate nonprofit that's been formed, but in some ways that makes this even, even more nimble. And this governance team sets direction, negotiates action plan, garners resources, creates accountability for implementation, evaluates data. And then we have the work groups that were outlined, um, on the previous slide. There is a coordinating committee that meets between meetings so that we can keep everything moving at the proper pace and create productive agendas for the next meeting. Um, and then we have implement action plan is agreed to in the collaborative. And that would be, that would be actually, uh, consistent with the proposal you're going to, um, hear from, from COPA today. Here's a snapshot of some of our partners. Uh, it's not all-inclusive, but you can see that it encompasses the entire county and, and different sectors in the county. And Supervisor Lopez, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board members. Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Baldwin, uh, for being here and for the, this, uh, coordinating and facilitation role that, uh, the Community Foundation is already playing. And I know from the materials that we have in our packet that, um, the, the, the thing that we'll be talking about in a minute, um, also is relying on, um, you all as being, uh, part of the glue. Uh, so thank you very much for that. I wonder, it, it mentions in your slide, it slides in a couple of places that there will be, um, you know, uh, adjustments to the approach, uh, as, as needed, you know, kind of checking on how things are going. Could you, um, I think that's really critical because I think the community health workers and the, the community organizations that will be, uh, implementing are going to find things as they go forward. Um, could you just, uh, and, and maybe it's part of the, the plan, which we don't know yet, but, um, what are your thoughts and the group's thoughts about how the, that mechanism works to ensure that that, um, the realities on the ground are getting communicated back to the folks who can tweak the plan or tweak the metrics and, um, to make sure that we're really addressing, uh, the issues, uh, as, as they are?
That's a wonderful question. Thank you. Um, I think the, the structure is actually illustrative of that and that you see that there are the working groups that, um, with, and as I mentioned, one of them's already meeting this, this week, uh, that will come together, uh, identify those needs and then bring those needs forward to the larger group, which, which has already got its next meeting scheduled of January 13. So, so, um, it's really a, uh, instead of, you know, we're all frustrated with top-down kinds of things. This is really a bottom-up, um, approach so that, so that what we learn, um, and, and, and if COPA is able to, uh, you know, if there is funding and the community health worker program gets going, we're going to start learning stuff very quickly. And we are going to have to be very nimble, uh, not just in, in identifying what the needs are, but then identifying the organizations that can mobilize. And, and the one thing that is going to make this extremely fluid, of course, is the, the rollout of vaccinations. And, uh, so we don't quite know how we're going to have to adapt to that yet, but we know that that will be a heavy lift and we are incorporating that into all of our, our discussions.
Great. Thank you, uh, very much. And I, I just, again, really appreciate the role that you're taking on and the, um, and it's great to see that you've got the Coalition Building Institute here. Um, they, uh, were very effective with the groundwater sustainability conversations. Um, and, and as we know, water is something we, um, we fight about, um, rather than find solutions for. So, um, we know they have, uh, uh, and Ms. Bartlett was part of that process. So, um, she's, she's been, been through it. And so, uh, I'm sure she'll help us all be effective. Um, I did have one other question or comment and it is eluding me. So, um, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parker. I've got a quick question for you, Dan. I'm wondering, you know, you talked a little bit about the funds that you guys raised through this entire, um, pandemic and the fact that the fund is still taking on some assistance. I'm wondering, what does that fund look like today? Is there opportunity for some of the projects coming before us like this COPA project for a partnership on something like that?
Yes, there are opportunities. We've actually sequestered some money, uh, from the fund in anticipation of helping to, um, uh, create some, um, some bandwidth, um, and build out infrastructure inside agencies that are going to be, um, utilizing or, or going to be part of this, this program. Uh, and frankly, sort of, um, any initiative that might come about. So there, the fund does have a balance. There's other grant, uh, requests that are coming into it as well. Uh, it goes out, you know, we make a lot of grants for food security, for, uh, providing financial assistance. Uh, so there are some dollars that have been, that have been those set aside that are really aligned with this. Uh, the, the dollars that we're really identifying right now are ones, there, there have been a lot of, um, trainings that the county has helped pay for, uh, for, in fact, maybe exclusively paid for, for the training of the community health workers. Um, right now, that's where we're earmarking, um, our funds is that if, is to, uh, rather than have that burden be carried on by the county, but that our COVID-19 relief fund, um, could pay for those community health worker trainings.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go to Supervisor Adams.
Yes, uh, a couple of things. Thank you so much, Dan, for just coming to the fore and bringing this together. I think you've got the skills and the experience locally to be able to do this. And I'm so very, very grateful for your standing up and, uh, and doing it. It's, it's just wonderful. And I really wanted to let you know how much I appreciate that. It's terrific.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You deserve it. Um, so just a couple of quick questions. I wanted to know, um, timeframe. What's your particular, um, thought on, it is real time. We do need to hit the ground running. If, I think the ground is already kind of, people are already running with it. But what's, what do you see as far as the timeframe that, uh, that will be needed for us to, to ensure that we are launching this, launching it well, that we've got the bandwidth to carry it through to the goal line?
As best as, as best we can know right now, I mean, and we've talked about this, this is kind of, um, uh, tied in with our contract with our, with the consultant. I mean, we, it's sort of a two-faced thing. We've got it through March 31st and then her work plan also then carries it forward to June 30. So, and, and so, Supervisor Adams, I'm really right. So, and when we were first talking about, um, putting this collaborative together, we actually, we were very aggressive in targeting February 1 for, for actually being able to know much more about how we can advance and, and be identifying gaps. Um, we haven't really backed away from that. And so, but once you've identified them, then you, you know, then you have to create a plan for addressing it. So I would say, right now, we're, we're looking at Q1, uh, and from a calendar year standpoint, uh, and really having, uh, programs up and running and fully, uh, I, I mean, the proposal you're here today will be running, um, much in advance of that. But it'll, but, um, but really identifying, you know, sort of the nuances and intricacies of some of these things. But I also, but realistically, I, I think we have to look to, um, late spring, early summer, uh, just because, uh, there, there's not going to be enough vaccinations to, um, and, and there's all going to have to be an education plan to get people, um, willing to do that. Uh, and so, and I'm, I'm obviously not an epidemiologist. I get my information the way everybody else does, but everything that we're hearing, um, is that this is going to certainly carry through, through the second quarter.
Excellent. That's, that's what, sort of where my mind was as well. When, when you were talking about the February 1 date, do you feel that there will be an opportunity to have some basic sort of metrics about how, how is this going? How do we tweak it? Where do we need to, to move? Is that what I was hearing you say?
That's, that, that is the hope. That's the goal. And, um, when we have our meeting, we're, the, the plan is for the larger collaborative to meet every other week and for the coordinating committee to meet in intervening weeks. And so, so that means that there'd be a meeting on the 13th and then perhaps, you know, on the 27th, but somewhere in that week. Um, and, um, in, we'll certainly know much, much more by then, but how concrete that is, I think actually relies somewhat on what we find out in the, in the meantime. But, but, it's, it's built into the, to the methodology and the culture of what we're doing. So I'm certainly hopeful that by Feb. 1, we will know, um, you know, not just know more, but actually have some sort of a game plan-
Right.
-that we're, that we're implementing and, and trying to resource.
I think your comment about starting from the bottom up really puts us in a much better position to be able to have hands-on data just right off the bat because people are out there gathering it, you know, just by the very, the very work that they're doing. So I, I really applaud you for that. And then finally, um, as you were talking about the funding that, uh, that you have, the donor fund, et cetera, et cetera, could you envision that cutting something off the price tag that we're looking at today?
Uh, I, I think it would be a challenge, um, on today's proposal. I, I think that, um, because the balance in that fund is, uh, sort of in the six to $700,000 range right now. Uh, we do have money set aside to support, uh, the community-based organizations as they do this work. Um, and then we also have money set aside to assist with the, um, the trainings, uh, the community health worker training. Uh, because, so, you know, because we also are still sending money to the Salvation Army. We're still sending money to the Food Bank. We're still doing all of that. So I would, I, I, I just don't want to overcommit. Uh, you can hear it in the edge of your voice a little bit. There's the desire to do it, but I just, I just cannot overcommit.
From your experience- Sorry, but the last question.
No, I just wish, I wish I could be more, um, firm and, and saying, well, sure, but I'm, I'm just unable to really do that.
From your experience in your many years of, of work, uh, with donors, would you expect that if the county made a bold statement, that there would be more interest from donors to join in and participate?
Well, I think that's definitely a possibility, uh, because one of the, as you know, from your time in philanthropy, one of the things that, that donors are sometimes leery of is feeling like there's actually supplanting public dollars. So if the public dollars clearly stepped up and did their part, then you can define where the philanthropic dollars, um, can, can really get leveraged and really, and start to motivate. I mean, as you know, you are bombarded by our social media messages about, um, contributing to this campaign. And those have been very effective. And as we tweak those messages, you've just raised in a very interesting angle. It's like, uh, the, you know, the county, the public dollars have done their part. Now, um, philanthropy can, can, can be a real value add on to this. So I think that's, that's a nice insight. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thanks so much again for your participation here. It's wonderful.
Your honor.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you. I just want to take an opportunity to really thank, uh, Dan Baldwin and the Community Foundation for their leadership. I mean, this pandemic has really showed us that we really need, uh, leadership at, at this most critical time, especially when it comes to having conversations with key stakeholders, community members. Um, and it, and it's a reminder that county government cannot do it alone. We have to do it truly as a community in Monterey County. And I just want to thank him for all the time invested and certainly for all the donors who have contributed generously to really help our county residents at a, at a, at a most difficult time. Uh, that work is not, um, the work goes, is, is not unrecognized. I mean, or I should say, the work has been very recognized, um, Dan, and appreciated by all of us. Um, and you've always been willing to step up to the plate. And you've always been willing to step up to the plate. But the Community Foundation has been an agency that doesn't just talk. It it put it puts its actions and dollars where its words are along with us. So I appreciate that, and I just wanted to really commend you. And look, and we hope that these efforts that you have embarked on will help us further turn the tide on this pandemic that continues to really devastate a lot of our the lives of a lot of our local residents. So thank you, and I just wanted to commend you on that, and I look forward to continue to supporting the work you're doing.
Thank you, Supervisor. It's very generous. Thank you.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yeah, Dan, I echo the thoughts of my colleagues. Really do appreciate you and your foundation stepping up. I mean, because you bring credibility to it, not just because I used to serve on your board, but you do. And you bring are able to, I think, have been able to help bring the public and the private sectors together and the nonprofits together so we can do this. So and I and I similar to what Supervisor Leo said, the Community Foundation just doesn't stand up there in the clouds. You get in and willing to get in and as you have on the homeless situation to get in and really work on solutions. So I guess my only question is, what do you see as any hurdles that that we're at going forward? Or do you?
I think I have a time shortage, don't I? There's a lot of hurdles, Supervisor Phillips. And and I think largely it's, you know, we know more than we did, but there's just so many still, so many unknowns. I I think the biggest hurdles, and this is one thing that the that the COPA proposal addresses, is having trusted messengers working in these communities. And and I think one of the I think trust is 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 a is a main hurdle. And so this proposal today begins to work on that so that so that as people receive messages, it'll actually change their actions. It'll change their behavior because they heard the message from someone that they trust. But John, there are really built-in hurdles here around crowded housing, the ability to get people quarantined, fear of losing either just minimally two weeks of their paycheck, or even in a more draconian way, maybe losing their job. And so so these hurt these hurdles are very, those are very real, and those are what are influencing behaviors. And people who are reluctant to to step forward are people who don't have good options for for quarantining. So there are many more, but I would say those are the the main ones that I would list. And of course, you're aware of those, but but those are the ones that have to be addressed head on.
Have we got it to the place where everybody will get paid if if they they quarantine for two weeks? Is 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 that a done deal? Are all the employers standing behind that?
I just I really don't feel like I can accurately answer that question.
All right. I'll ask someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Phillips. We'll go to Supervisor Parker next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things I did want to. The thing I wanted to ask you before was the degree to which you're thinking about this effort continuing to help with the rollout of the vaccines. As I think you were on the the Zoom presentation by the folks working with the farmworkers, and there was a good deal of, you know, dubiety expressed by that population about their desire to be vaccinated. And so kind of along the lines of the the trust, have you been talking about that possibility?
Absolutely. That's, you know, the Science and Best Practices Working Group, Dr. Radner, you know, your Dr. Moreno, Dr. Cuevas. I mean, they've all been very vocal, and and of course, Elsa Jimenez have all been very vocal about these these have to be aligned. And and so some of that is a little hypothetical because we don't know, like, how many doses are going to be here and and when. But but we can't wait to have that conversation once we know that. We have to start building this in. And again, around around the messaging and and who's delivering the messaging. Because the statistic that was given back on that presentation about the skepticism over or willingness to be vaccinated, that would really impair our ability to pull out of this pandemic and lower infections.
Thank you, yes. And I really appreciate that. It's kind of an example of both the trust feature and also the fact that even with the best-laid public health plans and 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 all the stuff that we're doing, all the resources that are available, they are not getting to the people who need them. So I think this, the fact that you've got the feedback loop and will be working on this will be critical because I think we're going to find things that we didn't intend that are actual obstacles and barriers to people. And and I just appreciate that we can work on decreasing or eliminating them. And I'm hopeful, too, that as you're working on the metrics, we can really be focusing on the outcomes that we desire and making sure that we're making this as as powerful a program as possible. Because what I see, and you alluded to it earlier, is this is actually an opportunity to kind of create an infrastructure and a network of empowerment and greater ability for the community to speak up about their needs. And and it's not just the COVID-19 that is affecting this particular population. These census tracts disproportionately, you know, we could go down a whole list of things where the inequities exist. So trying to turn the tide on that, I'm just really pleased, again, that you're you're a part of this effort and can help us really build something that's going to have a lasting benefit. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So you know there's supervisor hands up. I'm going to take it out to the public, see if we have any public comment on this presentation. We asked that the public use the raise hand function. It's at the bottom of your screen. If you're participating via landline, star nine, will raise your hand and let us know you wish to be recognized. I see a hand up from Rick Aldinger. Rick, we're going to go ahead and give you the ability to unmute yourself. You have two minutes to share your public comment with this board. Rick, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go. So as soon as I I was given the opportunity to speak, the Zoom web browser took over my entire computer screen, so I don't have my my notes in front of me. I'll do the best I can. So I'm I'm talking today as the co-chair of the Monterey County Hospitality Association Government Affairs Committee. And we all know that agriculture and hospitality are the two biggest industries in the county. We depend on each other for our mutual success. The initiative that we're talking about today is probably the most important initiative created during this pandemic with the the highest likelihood of success. We have it targets the right population, and the right people are behind this. So, you know, the health and safety of the entire county and all of our communities are on the line here. Community Foundation has stepped up to the plate as they always do, and they need our support. I understand that, you know, there's some questions about the level of funding and the timeframe that we're looking at here. And I would simply just urge the county in the strongest language I can to support this fully. Three months is not enough. This initiative will just be hitting their stride at that point. We need to make sure that this initiative survives and is successful, and we need to give it at least six months and the funding to go along with that to to realize the the fruits of those efforts. And I thank you very much for the support that you've given this initiative in your conversation today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to remind the public, we're not yet on the COPA item. That is next. And so I ask if you want to speak to that item, that you wait till we take up that item to make your comments. Again, this was on the Community Foundation's coalition. So with that in mind, I'm going to go to my next speaker, which is a 916 number that ends in 793. Again, 916-793, and we ask that you keep it to the topic at hand. You'll now have two minutes to share your public comment with this board. Star six will unmute your phone. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Jerome Jervis, and I serve as the Chair of the Monterey County Hotel Association. The purpose of a countywide multi-sector collaboration of existing and needed efforts to fight COVID-19 and its impact on our community and advancing a coordinated action plan driven by science and best practices in public health and equity. When we advocating for a strategy that is aimed to reduce the spread of the infection amongst the top six zip codes in our county whereby the infection is the highest, largely farmworkers community who have been disproportionately impacted. The reasons are crowded housing and the physical inability to isolate. This combined with the lack of access to healthcare, history, and the fear and mistrust of government systems for those who are undocumented and the economic insecurity of low wages are all disincentives to get tested and stay home from work if one is positive. We are one county. We recognize that we cannot advance until everyone is healthy, especially those in the hardest-hit communities. Our county's two biggest industries, agriculture and hospitality, are mutually dependent on each other. We need farmworkers to be healthy, and agriculture needs hospitality to be open to restore the food service markets. This is an innovative response targeted to the families in the communities of the highest risk. We stand in support of the proposal to establish the community health workers. Having trusted community leaders give support to the most vulnerable members of our county just makes good sense. We appreciate the leadership of the Community Foundation for Monterey County for creating the COVID-19 Collaborative to reduce infection by bringing all stakeholders to the table to solve these problems as partners. We must all pull together, and MCHA is ready to do its part. We also are in favor of the six-month project, long-term sustainable funding, higher admin costs for the organization to be successful in onboarding new community health workers, and it gives value to their work versus opting for three months, which would mean a lot of work to get started only to culminate within three months. Thank you very much for your time and effort.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Kevin Dayton next. Again, Mr. Dayton, you have two minutes to share your public comment with this board. You should now have the ability to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Supervisor Kevin. I'm the government affairs liaison for two of the listed partners of the Community Foundation for Monterey County, Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce and Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. First, I love the line in the staff report. The sentence says, "It is anticipated that all groups will contribute resources to the benefit of the common good." Great, great comment. They're a great attitude, very much in contrast with other attitudes out there. So I like that, Mr. Key. Thank you for putting that in. Additional comments, I found Community Foundation for Monterey County to be very accountable in how they collect and spend their money with the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce in a business grant program. And every week, they give a report to a group called the Monterey.
Mr. Dayton, you were somehow muted again.
Yes, so I don't know how that happened, but I'm back. I just want to mention that the Community Foundation, I feel they're accountable. And also for anybody who says, you know, you don't need coordination on this, just go out and do it. I think the coordination for this sort of major endeavor is very important. And I love to see see this go on with water issues and housing issues as well. I know there's been attempts before, but when everybody is doing their own thing, it's sometimes difficult to achieve anything. So I think that this has a lot of value trying to coordinate things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Seeing no other hands up, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board. This is strictly to receive a presentation. So once again, Dan, we thank you for making this presentation to the board. We appreciate it. And we're going to go ahead and move into our next item. Any final thoughts for us before we move on, Dan?
Just thank you so much for the opportunity, and thanks to all of you for your continued commitment. Very much appreciated.
Great. Thank you, Dan. All right, we're going to head into our next item. Bring up the official title here. This is to receive an update on the development of the Community Outreach and Education Pilot Project, a countywide project responding to the disparate impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on communities of color residing in the census tracts of the lowest quartile of the Healthy Place Index's tracks. This is a presentation from Rosemary Soto and Krista Hani, Dr. Krista Hani. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to you now.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This Rosemary Soto here. Thank you for the opportunity to to bring this item back to the Board of Supervisors, and Dr. Hani will be joining me in providing some of the key details of this presentation. This is a continuation, or I should say, it brings back the item that was presented by our partner, COPA, who provided some excellent advocacy and support for the expansion of the pilot project and bringing it up to full scale. This is a project that came out as a strategy of the the COVID-19 pandemic disparate impact report that was presented to you in late summer. And this strategy was to build upon the efforts of the 2020 census, which was a community-driven initiative that brought the the principle of of giving community organizations the opportunity to take leadership within the various sectors of community that are considered to be hard to reach or the most impacted. So we turned to these partners that were already doing a lot of work around community outreach focused on the impact of of the pandemic. They were doing so with support and partnership from from other groups as well, some together, some independently, and some with even including in partnership with our own health department as well as our ad commissioner to whether it be strategies for providing education and information or distribution of PPE or any other items that were needed for our communities. So this, a lot of this work had already been underway, and Dr. Hani and I reached out to form more of a collaborative effort between all of those organizations and bring some very specific strategies to how the outreach would be conducted. We learned a lot from other counties, including Fresno County. So you often hear a reference to the Fresno County model. But we also turned to other counties that had a lot of these strategies underway as well, including Sonoma and San Diego County. So with all of the lessons learned, we adapted those specific strategies and curriculums to to meet the needs of Monterey County and what was going on here already. The implementation has already begun, and we have thus far trained 45 community health workers that were recruited by the community partners that were listed just before. And they are trained now and able to go out and provide community outreach and education on both the prevention of the spread of the coronavirus, but also to be able to provide resources and supports for for or and provide that system navigation that many of our community members so much need. They also will provide assistance with setting up appointments for testing and as well as, again, I mentioned navigating access to those resources that will support people in providing adequate isolation and recovery as well as the financial aid programs that are available throughout the county to support any loss of wages, any needs of immediate essential items. And then they're they're currently deployed to communities in those HBI census tracts. They're also provided some efforts in the in the at the testing sites as well. And in just the last week, which is the first week of implementation, they reached more than 300 people at three specific opt-in serve sites throughout the county. And so And so we know that the capacity could very well be there to reach the requested expansion for 100 community health workers. And they are poised to do this work throughout the county and other parts of the county that they might not have been already in just this past week. And I'll turn to Dr. Hani to talk a bit more about the process metrics that we are having, setting up in place to be able to measure our success.
Thank you, Rosemary. Rosemary alluded to some of those metrics that we've started to collect already. We have the master calendar of the site locations where the various CBOs are entering in the staff that are going to be and when, and that we can definitely try to make sure they're there at some of those critical times, especially for the walk-in appointments. Some of the sites have been very appreciative of them, have expressed that, having them there because they see the need. And then the other thing that we're doing is tracking, you know, the number of people that they're contacting. And we're refining that. We're learning from some of those other counties as to how they've been collecting data. But we're thinking with what will work across our CBOs. We have an Excel tracking sheet for that, but we'd like to switch that to probably a Google Form. So at the end of each time at each site, the CHW would be able to go in and quickly enter the basic data. They're collecting it while they're there, but won't have time to actually enter per person. And then that will allow us in real time to keep track of the various types of needs that are being met or found to be needed, to be filled. And then we're able to then refine the various materials that we've also developed. And then continue to track that access to resources. So for example, we're looking at how we can get people access to bags of food or sanitation supplies, and how the CBOs can access that quickly and then do deliveries out to people that are testing positive and need that for self-isolation. I would like to mention besides the work of the CBOs at the sites, we've already, Lides Campus Inus has also arranged for a Plática, or more like a town hall tomorrow. Dr. Moreno is going to be speaking at that with a number of other individuals, and such as Senator Caballero. And one of their Platicas, a few months ago, I think it is now, you know, garnered 3,000 views for people either at the time of or after because it was recorded. So it definitely has good potential for reach with that. And the other data that is being collected, the Alliance has been participating, and they are messaging out to their members and are also targeting within the various particular census tracts. And they're reaching about 1,000 people a week right now with phone calls for their staff. They're getting mobilized as sort of volunteer CHWs to help with that. They're getting paid, but it's a job duty on top of other job duties. And so I think we're getting very good turnout right now by the CBOs and real commitment during the holiday season. And then the other thing is how we replicate this through some of the procedures that we developed, that Rosemary developed with the partners before during census. So we're in the process of printing out door hangers right now, and we'll have those door hangers distributed in the next two weeks. And they have sort of a holiday theme to them, and they have a QR code to link people to a list of the testing sites, as well as basic, please, you know, don't, don't visit with family or friends during the holidays, and encouraging that people, you know, socially distance and don't do too many trips. Rosemary, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you. And so now what you have, what you've received before you in the board packet is there are, there are two budgets to consider. Staff recommendation includes a three-month investment, considering where we might be financially as a county, but also considering where we are with implementation as well. This is a budget for a three-month period to begin in January, it would be effective January 1. The current funding that the organizations are operating under now funds them through the end of this month, although it is important to recognize that the funding that they were currently operating under is actually quite minimal in consideration to what actual cost is. So this is a budget that brings them back to a bit more of a realistic amount that would cover the actual cost, and to a certain extent. And I think that what is important to recognize is that many of the items here are for the cover, to cover the personnel costs. It also includes some operating expenses and travel mileage. The areas that are probably not as fully funded here in this recommendation is a quarantine support. We currently do have a quarantine stipend program that the Health Department has initiated and launched just about, I believe, a couple of months ago. And there is also some funding allocated in here for essential emergency items such as food, diapers, and whatnot. We do feel that there might be more of a need for the quarantine stipend as an incentive, or more so as meeting the need at an immediate basis. And so that's something that the community has voiced quite clearly. And we also have an indirect admin cost that is also included here. Organizations are needing to cover the cost of their own organization's admin services for this in particular. So this recommendation for a three-month budget is at a total of $2.296, $952. So that is something that the board can consider. And then there is a six-month budget, which takes us to, through the end of June. And this also is very similar to what, in terms of the figures and how we calculated this amount. This is a six-month budget that was driven and developed in partnership with community, the community partners. Community partners were a big part of the process of developing a six-month budget. And this is where we arrived at in terms of a recommendation by the community. And again, there are probably a few pros and cons with going with a three-month versus a six-month budget. Some, one being that the, a three-month kind of gives us the opportunity to see how things are going in the first couple of months of its launch and its implementation, and then determining what other potential needs might have come up that we didn't anticipate. A few opportunities for learning some lessons on what that implementation is like here in Monterey County. And then coming back with a progress update to show what those first three months of a full-on implementation looked like and what those results were. And then come back with, aside from the status report being if there is a need for continued funding for further sustainability, that might be the opportunity for that. That's what a three-month period gives us the opportunity to do. So at this point, what I do want to just conclude our presentation is that with the staff recommendation of to fund the pilot project for a three-month period, we also recommend that the governance and distribution of funds be managed by the Community Foundation, as we just heard a presentation update by Dan Baldwin. It is, it was very, a very good experience, and it was a very productive process for us to work with the Community Foundation on the 2020 Census Initiative. And we feel that a very similar frame of operating could be had with this particular project, and that support and engagement of the county with the, with community, as well as the, under the leadership of the Community Foundation, could prove to be quite successful for this initiative as well. And I cannot emphasize enough that this project is definitely one that is community-driven. Community voice and community perspective is definitely centered and rooted in this work. And just much like what we experienced with the census, we feel it can continue with this form of leadership and increase and bring on the voice and the experience of other sectors as well. So with that, I will conclude this presentation and welcome comments and questions.
Thank you, Rosemary. I'm going to go to Supervisor Alejo first. Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Rosemary for the presentation, and certainly I want to recognize the work from the community. I think this effort came forward as a result of recognizing that there was gaps in ways that we were serving the community. I know our Health Department, our Health Officer, the Board, a lot of our county staff, Office of Emergency Services, everybody's really, I think, really done the best that it could do and constantly reviewing, analyzing, and changing our strategy about how we could curb this pandemic in Monterey County. But there was a growing recognition that we could probably do a better job in partnering with local community group, with local faith organizations, and really try to get more community-oriented folks that could do the necessary follow-through with a lot of our impacted residents. Every day that we see the daily numbers of COVID infections and hospitalizations and deaths, it really, I think, drives us that we have to do more. We're not doing enough. We're doing a lot of good efforts, but we're not doing enough. When we continue to see our numbers rise and continue to see record number of deaths, I put myself in the shoes of those family members losing their parent or their brother, their sister. And I've already lost some friends who have lost their parents recently really hits home. And I take it with all seriousness. So this is, I think, another of those moments where leadership is really required among our board, where we are called to step forward and put some resources. These resources that we're asking for today are either going to sit in some assignment account, or we're going to put them to good use to save the lives of our local residents. If we could save one life, one life, it's worth that effort. And so I know that this effort will be the first of its kind on the Central Coast, even though we're modeling after the efforts of Fresno County, Sonoma, San Diego, as stated. This would be the first effort of its kind, and it's not going to be necessary to replicate it because we're going to try to implement a program that is tailored to the needs of Monterey County. It's going to have our local leaders, our local organizations. It's going to have their experience and their insight and their input in developing this program. So it's going to be really tailored to fit the needs of Monterey County. But Rosemary, a question though, is, the, a big question is, the six-month versus the three-month? And where would recommended money? And I think from the staff report, it is being recommended to come from the cannabis assignment account?
That is correct Supervisor. That is the recommendation, that it come from the cannabis assignment.
And I know it's a large sum that we're asking for, but we are in a pandemic and we are during a time of crisis. Could you elaborate? You said there's some pros and cons versus the three versus the six. I know that with the six-month program, when you hire and train people, organizations that are partnering for this program want to have success. They want to measure their outcomes and their milestones. And they also want to make sure they keep highly trained staff, that there's not, it's not going to be a short sprint. Just today, I knew, we knew that if we didn't bring this up, perhaps we're not going to have this decision today until mid-January. It takes time to get a program up and running, do the, if there are more employee, employment, hiring needs to happen, and more training, that's going to take some time too. So a three-month seems like a very short window of time when it, this next month from after today till January, it's going to take some time to do that ramp-up. And how, and considering how might that work in a three-month approval versus a six-month approval?
Thank you for your question Supervisor. With a three-month approval, we are quite prepared to move rapidly on subcontracting these funds with the Community Foundation. And they also have the infrastructure to turn around and grant most of some of these organizations that are already partners and probably already grantees of the Community Foundation. They would also have the opportunity to expand beyond the listed partners who are currently engaged. Perhaps there might be other organizations that are ready or are interested in joining the effort. So we feel confident that if the board should choose to support and fund a three-month budget, we would be able to move fairly quickly on the implementation of those funds and starting those agreements.
Great. And as if, because I haven't, I'm certainly looking forward to hearing what my colleagues think, but besides the cannabis funds, would it be not to consider perhaps half from the cannabis, half from the strategic reserve?
I would have to defer that question to our finance team. I was directed to focus on the cannabis, so.
You just say it's above your pragerade.
It is, sir. You're correct.
Is Mr. Vega on with us? I know he was here earlier. Yeah, he's got his hand raised on the participants side. I'm going to ask Joel to move him over as a panelist to help answer this and future questions. All right, welcome, Mr. Vega. You should now be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So the question was whether or not other funding sources were considered including the strategic reserve, correct? So all funding available at the county level could be considered. However, the risk for the county looking at something like the strategic reserve is larger in terms of overall financial stability. If that reserve goes under a certain level, it could create some financial risk for the county in the terms of lower credit ratings, higher interest rate for loans, or when you acquire capital, and also the ability for the county to respond to any other type of emergency in the future as well. So I think that overall, it is something that could also be tapped into. But overall, I think that the priority of the funds for a longer financial stability of the county should be something like cannabis contingencies, and then the strategic reserves to be left unless there are no other resources available.
Okay, got it. I just know that in our budget committee meetings that we had replenished the strategic reserves from previous uses. We used them previously during the wildfires, during the storms of 2017 to fund a lot of the key infrastructure projects. There's no doubt that this current COVID pandemic is equal, if not more, I think devastating than the previous natural disasters. And I just want us to, just as we deliberate today, to just keep in mind that there potentially is some other resources. We did replenish that fund that had been utilized back to its original amounts from prior to the fires and the storms. So I just wanted to just encourage that as we think about how to, where to take it from, there is some other options. But I know it's Mr. Vega's job to try to use other pots first before tapping into the strategic reserve. Last point I'll make is just really want to thank the community for really coming together with the Community Foundation. And as Mr. Baldwin expressed, he has also put some other resources forward by hiring consultants to help shape the program, to report our measurements of the success of the program. We want this to be successful, and I think all of us are invested to make sure that it works, but really targeting it to the areas of greatest need and challenge in our county. And it's really going to come by having a partnership. And I think from all the messages that we hear from other stakeholders, from folks in hospitality and agriculture, the Bishop of the Monterey Diocese is fully on board. We know that we have a broader support from the community that are asking us today to give us a try. Let's see how it could work. Let's see how we could curb this pandemic in Monterey County by doing something that we haven't tried before that is showing to work in other counties that have made efforts as well. So, and I know that even the plan, I think they'll elaborate, is that it's not only, it's trying to focus in all parts of the county now that where there is need. Originally, it was more targeted to only more limited areas, but they now kind of expanded their plan to reach, I think, all corners of Monterey County where they know they can help and the need is there. Thank you.
Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Soto, and everyone who has been working furiously to bring this item, or working happily to bring this item before us, and clearly it's a work in progress. I have a few questions. One is, could you talk a little bit more about how you a little bit more about how you see this program fitting in with the Community Foundation collaboration and coordination? And I ask that with a a few things specifically in mind. So I asked, um, Mr. Baldwin about kind of the mechanism for feedback from the community health workers, um, and, um, the nonprofits as, uh, there, and the community partners of all kinds who are, um, implementing the the plan. Um, w- w- the, uh, I asked about the mechanism for getting that feedback to the group and then adjusting the, uh, the the approach. Um, is is this plan going to essentially be being administered by the Community Foundation from the perspective of getting that feedback and then tweaking what we're doing based on, uh, the realities on the ground?
Supervisor Parker, thank you for your question, and, um, it's it's an important one, because one of the things that, um, Dr. Hani and I set out to do at the start of 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 bringing these collaborative partners together from the community is that we establish, we are very intentional about establishing and creating a safe space for that dialogue, and that very raw and real, let's keep it real, kind of conversations about what the issues are, what the barriers are, whether they be actual policy or artificial barriers, and how do we, how do we dismantle, how do we fix that? And, um, we have been meeting now for weeks on a weekly basis with our community partners, all of those who were listed, and, um, we, in in our trainings of the CHWs that that, uh, participated over the last three sessions, um, we did clearly see that there was a need for more of that safe space uh, to continue with the CHWs as well. And so while we're still kind of working that piece out, um, we know that the CHWs have close contact with our community partners and, uh, the people who are in the leadership roles that are working directly with the CHW. So that information is brought to us on a weekly basis, and then we quickly move to action to be able to, um, address those issues or those concerns, or anything that we hear that is is becoming a barrier for people to access services. Um, so that is something that we definitely continue. Erika Matadamas has been, uh, invited, and she's been a part of those conversations, which I think has been very, very important, and it's something that she's able to take back. So a a big part of that work is to make sure that we continue to connect dots so that we're not operating in silos, and we continue to have a very steady flow of communication. And as far as how does it fit into the greater collaborative, I think that would be a very natural fit to be considered as a a perhaps a work group or a a a part of a strategy that works along with that. Of course, the more of those details to be a bit more structured in an official capacity is still to be had, but, um, I I can assure you that, um, Dr. Hani and I will make sure that those spaces for dialogue and for feedback from the community partners as well as the CHWs continues. That is, that is critical. Without that continuous communication, then, uh, it it really, it it ceases to be community engagement as as it should be. So we definitely are committed to continuing that.
Great, thank you. And, um, uh, yeah, and of course, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't know what the governance model is. We don't know what the plan is. We don't know what the metrics are. I mean, this is, so it's, to me, I'm asking questions that need to be specific and grounded, um, but to me, they're abstract right now, because I really, I just have no idea what is going on. So my other question is, uh, related to the, um, uh, Community Foundation collaborative. Um, I assume, it sounds like you're talking about that this pilot, this program will be, uh, embedded in the governance. Um, um, and my other question is, will you be working with um, the Community Foundation and the partners, um, to help with the metrics? When I looked at the metrics, they're strong on process, but I just feel like it's it's the outcomes. It's the timelines. We need to know what are people needing, how quickly can we get them connected to what they need, not just giving information, not just talking to people, but really ensuring that they're getting what they need. And, um, so uh, I I'm sure that the metrics are being worked on, but I just am hopeful that with the with the facilitator, with, uh, the Community Foundation, they do this kind of work. Um, I hope Dr. Gupta will be involved. He's done this work internationally, how to make sure you're really um, measuring what you need to measure, so that you're you're just hitting the ground um, with your full, uh, effectiveness, um, and and, you know, being able to tweak, um, as needed. So is that, is that what's envisioned, that the group will also be, um, participating in creating the metrics?
Yes, Supervisor Parker, this is, uh, Dr. Chris Behany, and yes, we're definitely going to be working with the group. We, there there was a lot of lifting that went on just to get the pilot project going as quickly as we did, and so we wanted to make sure that the community health workers got trained and that we're focusing on that, and that those alignments across all the CBOs that have been participating, uh, a lot of the materials to have that consistent messaging. And and so it was a basic data collection to start with the plan to ramp it up, and especially when you're getting um, quite a few CHWs out there, to make sure that you can have that consistency, something that's easy for them to utilize when they're in the field, and that's, I've mentioned, um, that there's the potential to use Google Forms or some other software where they're out in the field, just to be able to enter it in on their phone, and so by the time a larger community health worker project was was going, we'd have that in place, and that would tie in with those longer-term metrics, especially that you're interested in.
Great, thank you. That's what I would imagine, um, so I'm glad to to hear that that's the case. Um, I also, um, I assume that you have the list of census tracts, um, and, um, that also was not provided, uh, to us, but do you have, or, um, are you aligning, trying to align each census tract with um, at least one of the community-based organizations or other existing nonprofits, so that there's a real, um, kind of, uh, I don't know, sense of ownership, and it's our neighbors, and anyway, just, uh, is that part of the thinking?
Yes, it is, Supervisor. Um, the the partners are are recruiting and and employing, uh, CHWs who who live in the communities that are within that census tract for the most part, and in in some areas where there's there's a need to to deploy some from other parts of the community, they have uh, some trusted relationships with those communities within those census tracts, so that is definitely a cornerstone of this project as well.
Great. And of course, uh, Community Foundation has relationships with, um, nonprofits and organizations as well, in case we, you know, have have difficulty. Um, just, I think, two more questions. One is, um, the question I asked, um, Dan Baldwin, which is, are we, are we, uh, not not in our immediate efforts, but in our thinking, uh, as we develop, uh, the program and the and the plan, are we thinking about, uh, engaging these community health workers as part of, uh, the vaccination uh, effort and strategy?
Yes, that would be the plan, where we definitely wanna make sure that we have, again, messaging, uh, for vaccination strategies across the county that would be consistent, and then that the community health workers would be able to help with that, uh, and and then also encouraging people, you know, to get to vaccination sites.
Super. Great. Well, I think, um, you know, obviously, there's, there's a lot happening, a lot of good, um, thinking, a lot going on. Um, and I think, um, as soon as we can, I mean, and I would hope, uh, the first meeting in January, I think that would be the the January 12th. I mean, I think it'll be really helpful for us to see the plan, uh, know more about the governance, know what the metrics are. I know, you, you know, there's no way you could have gotten all of that together for today's meeting, but I think um, first thing next year, we need the the specifics, um, you know, what are the census tracts? Um, who's, who's deploying there? Um, and obviously, more, more will get filled in as we as we go along. Um, last question, what is our sense about how much of any of these activities might qualify for, uh, new CARES Act funding, or any other of the state and federal um, pots of money, uh, in addition to whatever the philanthropic community can, uh, come up with?
Well, I don't know the details of of what the federal government is considering for for CARES Act funding going forward, but, uh, the other counties that have been using it. Oh, sorry, Charles McKee, uh, CEO Charles McKee, did you want to speak up to answer this?
Sure. Uh, you were handling it well, though. I liked that. Um, the 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 current, uh, new stimulus bill that we understand is coming out of out of Congress right now. Uh, my, uh, I'm not aware of any, uh, local government funding coming out of that bill, so I don't think there's gonna be any money out of out of the the current, um, proposal from Washington. Uh, that doesn't mean there won't be anything new coming down the road, uh, in the, in 2021, and we hope that there is, because there's obviously a big need. Uh, th- that said, there may also be opportunities for us to, uh, submit these, uh, expenses for FEMA reimbursement. I don't know if it'll qualify. Uh, that's something for our FEMA experts to to, uh, opine on, but it's something we would certainly certainly look for. And 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 while I have the floor, I just, I I would, I would also uh, reiterate that, uh, this is definitely a, uh, you know, a a crisis situation, emergency situation, the pandemic, and we're trying to look for all opportunities for, uh, funding, uh, good programs that might help, uh, uh, slow the spread. But I would also caution that, uh, we have a long time to go before the end of this pandemic, as far as I can tell. Uh, and, uh, potentially, a lot of needs, uh, in the, uh, in in 2021, uh, along these lines. And as we start to utilize up the funding that we had from the CARES Act, from, uh, cannabis, from contingencies, all those different pots of money uh, are starting to dwindle. I know that there are going to be requests coming from various departments soon, uh, to the board, uh, through my office for, uh, funding of additional programs that we've, that that we're looking at, whether it's the, uh, you know, the income replacement stipend, uh, uh, helping out with different, uh, pots and pieces of of the emergency, uh, operations center. Uh, so I just would, you know, this is really important stuff that we're doing here today. I just wanna make sure everybody has the the lens on that that there, that there's going to be many more asks as we go down, uh, through 2021.
Thank you, Mr. McKee, and that's part of, that's why I'm asking the question, because I think as we go forward, I think we're gonna, um, I think it's gonna be important to, you know, make a commitment to a a program of six months at at the very least, because between COVID-19, the return of the ag workers, the rollout of the vaccine, I mean, we're gonna, there are gonna be things to do um, for, uh, and making sure that these neighborhoods that get usually get left out of everything, or they're last on the list, that we're it we're, you know, engaging with them, uh, well. Um, I think it's gonna be critical. Um, but I also think that as we go forward and we check in about the realities on the ground and what we're finding, and what the costs really are and what they aren't, um, and we're looking to our philanthropic partners, um, we need to be able to fine tune, what are the things that that the, that the foundations and members of the community, um, can and want to fund that, um, particularly those things that may not qualify for the kinds of reimbursement that the county might get, so that we're really maximizing all of our funding streams with the knowledge that, um, you know, a lot of this work is just important to do, um, whether or not there's, um, reimbursement. I mean, this is, you know, it's a, it's a disaster of, um, legendary proportions. So we need to, you know, we need to be able to step up, but we also need to be as, um, strategic and smart about it as we possibly can be. So, and I know everybody's focused on that, so it's not like I'm saying you're not doing it. I'm just saying, we're gonna need to continue to pay very, very close attention and collaborate on on this level as well. So, um, thank you. Appreciate being able to ask these questions.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm gonna go to Supervisor Phillips next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you both for your work on this. You know, I I think it's interesting to also recognize the the work that's got in and done by the hospitality and the hotel, uh, people, even though they're they're not directly impacted, although they impacted because, uh, till we get this situation fixed better, uh, they're closed down, but the 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 work that Barbara Meister and Janine Chikaret and a a lot of others have done of getting in and trying to work on this problem, even though it's 25, 30 miles away from where where they are, i- is important. I I obviously have a concern, uh, uh, with when we're talking about two and a half million versus five million, uh, on on it, but um, looking at it realistically, I don't know how you have a program that's really gonna be, uh, effective i- i- in just three months, and so I I would lean towards, uh, a a six-month commitment, although my concern is once we make a commitment, the county commitment, oh, we're gonna spend five million, then then it's hard to get any matching monies coming in, and and, uh, that's a problem from the philanthropic, but, I mean, it was the the state and the federal government that said, "Look, uh, there's one thing you can't close down. It's it's, uh, providing food for the rest of the nation." And, uh, I would sure hope that we could somehow, um, get the federal government and or the state government to come in and h- help provide some of the funding for this, and my only reluctance, when we commit to five million, they say, "Well, that's that's a done deal." But as pointed out by Mr. McKee, there's gonna be a lot of other needs, uh, COVID-related and non-COVID-related that that we're we're gonna have to be looking to, where we go into our pocket, so. Um, but, uh, I I can't see, and especially with, uh, w- w- when the vaccines come aboard, we're gonna need this group of support to make sure they're that they're trusted and administered properly, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm gonna go to Supervisor Adams next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I wanna start by saying thank you to the staff for the great report that you've pulled in. I really appreciate, uh, the work that you've done on it. It's, um, always a pleasure to work with both Dr. Hani and Rosemary Soto, whom I've known for a long time, and the the commitment that they had to this is just really, really wonderful, and I'm very pleased with it all. Um, I also just have to say how impressed I am with my colleagues on the board today. Um, I don't always agree with some of you, but every single one of you has just said nothing but everything that's in my own heart, and I'm so delighted to see that, um, I think we're on basically the same page as far as really addressing this problem right at its roots. And this program gives us the opportunity to do that. I think that we're really looking at it in the most um, long-term, comprehensive way as possible. Um, listening to Dan Baldwin speak and, um, and the Monterey County Hospitality Association speak, they're underlining that we are one county, and with what Supervisor Phillips just said, that yes, we're 30 miles away from, um, where the the restaurants are, et cetera, where the problem is and the restaurants are. We're all one county, and we're linked in this just in so many ways. Um, I think that, uh, underscoring some of the other comments that have been made, I love the idea that by February 1, because we are working this from the bottom up, we're gonna be able to have some metrics. We're gonna be able to be up and running, fully running, more quickly than before, than others, than other programs where we may have attempted to do so. But again, just hearing again from MCH, from the Hospitality Association, and from from Dan Baldwin and my colleagues, we really need to look at this for the longer term. We need to look at it in a six-month, um, realm. Um, it simply is Supervisor Laheaux said, just be being able to get people hired and to have them continue with us. Um, I think as well, it's very different to look at two, three-month programs than it is looking at one six-month program. So I'm certainly gonna be supportive of a of a six-month program as we look at this. Um, the, uh, the progress reports, the status reports, um, I know Rosemary had mentioned that they could be, uh, come, you know, they would be ready by in three months, but I think, quite frankly, working from the ground up, we're going to have access to data much more quickly than, um, we would have in a normal circumstance. So I I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have, as Dan had said, um, February 1, we'll have some information just coming right out. I could continue on, but I think I'm saying the same things that my colleagues have already said. I'm, I think that this is more than really important stuff. I think this is the biggest thing that we have ever been charged with doing, and if we don't step forth in a strong, resolute way, I don't think that we're going to succeed. We're all talking the same language, and I think we have to make our mark. We probably will be known as the first county to ever thoroughly jump in and invest our dollars in something that can make a difference at the core, and it will be lasting, therefore. can make a difference at the core, and it will be lasting, therefore. I know we're all worried about the funding, and God only knows, you know how I am, with my little change purse of cannabis money, I act like it's my own. Um, and I, I'm troubled by the amount of money that we're being asked to spend. So, I'm thinking if we spread it out a little bit, that it might work better. And I was thinking perhaps we should take a million from contingency, a million from strategic reserves, which will still leave 66 million there, and 2.9 million from cannabis, which will leave about 12 million in that fund. Um, that way, we'll have the full 4.9 million. We can start moving forward with the project immediately, and we'll be able to really get a handle on this proj- this process. I think as well for the vaccines, yes, we definitely have to have this program engaged in the whole vaccine program, both of convincing people to take it, and secondly, ensuring that they do have the opportunity to be vaccinated. We don't even know if we're gonna have enough vaccine in three months, so we, the six-month, uh, look is really going to be important. So, Mr. Chair, when it might be appropriate, I would love to make a motion to move forward with this project. And, um, I would like to make it, move forward with this project for the six months and for the three, uh, prompt approach to funding, as I had just mentioned. A million from contingency, a million from strategic reserve, and 2.9 million from cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We still have to go out to the public, so when the appropriate time is here, I will check back in with you. But I, I wanted to take an opportunity to ask a couple of questions. I, I'm gonna not reiterate the questions already put forward by my colleagues, and obviously, for all the right reasons, this is something we're supporting. I think some of the questions that I have, obviously, revolve around the points pointed out by Supervisor Parkers, who are being asked to jump and trust that, uh, the parachute's gonna open, and we can't tell you what color it is. All right, here we go. Uh, but, looking at the budgets, I did have a question on a specific line item, which is indirect admin. Can somebody clarify for me what that 10% of the overall cost is for and who it would go to? Because I see that number, yeah, so I'm looking at the six-month proposal, that's $642,000. Is that internal county admin, or is that exterior? I mean, when I look at that number, I think that we put 600,000 into the stipend program that's running right now and already doing extremely well. I just don't understand why we're putting an admin cost to ourselves in there, if that's what it is. Is there somebody that can clarify for me?
Um, yes, Supervisor, that is a good question. And it, it is not to ourselves. It is actually to support the community organizations and their admin costs for, for, for managing, um, within their, because each organization has their own structure and, and, and staff, admin staffing that would have to support this project. So, that is directly going to the communities, uh, community organizations. Every item within this budget that's come before you is external.
But, so we don't know who that's going to? Is that what I'm hearing, then? If we don't know who all the partners are exactly yet, and how would it be broken? I mean, I, I thought we're looking for a partnership, and I see, you know, to me, that, I see that as part of the partnership. And so, are, are, is, are we gonna go further by paying less to a single organization in doing that?
Um, well, it would be some, it would, the line item, that it would be included so that when the, um, Community Foundation goes to make these grants to the organizations that are currently participating, and perhaps additional, um, organizations, if, if they so do expand to include others, that would be funding that is, um, allocated for admin costs.
Okay, but, I, I was, so, I guess I'm just confused in terms of what the admin would be if, if the, at least in, from the, the nebulous proposal we've heard, if the training is done by the Community Foundation, and then the, and the county as well, and the reporting is through the county, 10%, I mean, it ju- it seems a little high to me, is, is what I'll say, in terms of the overall cost of the project, um, when there's just so much need. And I look at the line item above, which is the quarantine support, and quarantine stipend is blank, right? And I'd rather see all that money plugged in there and help the community. I think that's what we're all trying to do here. Uh, and so, I'd, I'd love, I'd love to revisit that portion, uh, just to make sure that it's a true partnership, because I think that's what we're proposing here, and I wanna see these dollars hit the community as, as quickly and as, as effectively as possible.
So, um, i- if I may attempt once again to clarify, so, let's say a, a grantee is a community-based organization, and they have their own fiscal management team and their own other administrative and oversight, um, uh, costs that, that comes within their organization. Um, that is what that admin, uh, allocation there would cover, would help to cover the cost to actually take the grant and implement the, the services within, within their, their, um, administrative structure within their organization. So, it doesn't go to the cost of what the Community Foundation would be providing in terms of admin and oversight or, or governance support, and it doesn't, uh, certainly none of it remains within the county for our own, uh, administrative and direct costs.
So, I, I, I get that now. I guess my, my point is simply that, looking at that number and how big it is, is, is in relation to what's actually in the number above, it seems, you know, I'd rather flip those two numbers. I mean, personally, I'd rather see more go to the community. I think that's where the need is, and that's where we're trying to get these dollars. Uh, and especially if we're still continuing to do a lot of the support work around this, along with the Community Foundation, I feel that, you know, again, that's just me looking at the, at the budget item here in front of me, and, and what we do know today, and what seems appropriate. Uh, I'm gonna go to Supervisor Phillips next.
Yeah, I, I think you bring up a good point. Uh, I mean, you, you got Community Foundation that's waiving any fees for administration, uh, and, and so, that's a concern. And the other positive thing about what we're doing is, um, but I'd rather see the money go to something other than administrative fee. But the other positive thing of what we're doing is, we're prov- providing for some jobs for some, our community residents that, that, um, need a job, because, uh, the, the, the job they usually do is closed down. So, um, I, I think it has a positive aspect that way, too. But I share your concerns about the administrative costs.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. But, you know, the only comment that I would wanna make is that so many of the community-based organizations that we're talking about are really run on a shoestring. They have just very low budgets, and a 10% overhead cost for them is not really very much. There are so many organizations that have much higher than a 10% overhead cost. I, I would expect, I think, back to United Way, and I know Rancho Cielo as well, you have to have money to turn the lights on. And those are the kinds of things that administrative costs really, uh, really cover. So, to think that we could ask some of the small organizations to be able to just put their, their money and their time in virtually for free, I think that we would be running the risk of really, um, losing the ability of the organization to continue to function. So, I just wanted to clarify that from my perspective and experience. Thank you.
It says here 15%.
Yeah, there's 10% on the three-month and 15% on the six-month. Supervisor Lejo?
No, uh, I was just gonna suggest that, that, yeah, even in other grant programs, I mean, that administrative side i- is necessary for, for nonprofit partners to be able to, uh, implement these programs. But instead of the 15, I think certainly you could easily, in, in a motion, also make that adjustment to add at least probably another 100,000 out of that amount towards, um, towards the alternative, um, housing stipend. Um, and I think it would, it would reduce that percent, probably, I don't know if that, with that equates to about 12%, but there'd still be enough to cover both, and also address your concern. And, and all these things, just like, just like with the CARES funding, we, we allocate, we make a budget, but as time goes on, if the fu- money's not spent, we could re- reallocate that. And that's why I think in any motion today, we should certainly have a regular review of this program, so that we're, we're monitoring. It's a, it's a big commitment, and I'm, I'm glad that all my colleagues are expressing the willingness to take a lead and support a six-month program. That's exciting, that's bold, that's, that's, uh, that's courage, a- at a time where we really need it. But in return, I think it's fair to just ask for regular reports, so that we're, uh, engaged, we're getting updates, we're, all the, all the questions that Supervisor, um, Parker asked, we're gonna get those reports regularly, and we're able to make adjustments, so that this program can be a success story. We want it to be a success story, and we certainly wanna show that the, the limited resources that we do have, we put them to good use. Unlike Fresno, and unlike these other counties, they were able to get those big allocations directly from the federal government through the CARES funding. This, today, is, is, is different, because we are using local dollars. This is a local commitment. So, it's even, even, even more bold than other counties, 'cause, 'cause we already utilized our CARES funding. This is coming from local funding, and it's really trying to demonstrate that we're committed to doing more and trying to save more lives in our county. So, this is, I think, even a stronger statement by, by taking this vote here today and approving these fundings. And that small amount, we could adjust it. We're probably gonna have to make a lot of other adjustments as a program gets implemented, and we see what gets spent and what gets not. So, I think we're in a good position to make that change now, and then just make changes, more changes as the program rolls out.
Thank you. I did just wanna also speak to where these dollars are coming from. I know we keep saying that, that it's the county and cannabis being the main fund, but, you know, with the majority of the cannabis industry in my district, I wanna thank them. I wanna thank them for stepping up, for continuing to be partners with us through this pandemic. And, you know, I've, I've had the fortune to speak with many of these cannabis, uh, folks in the last few weeks, and, you know, they've, they've highlighted for me the fact that they're proud of the fact that so many different media stories have covered where this funding is coming from, and the fact that they're having a positive impact on our community. And so, I just wanna make sure that the community is aware that this is only possible because this board took action a few years ago on the leading edge of a new industry booming in California to welcome them in and to take a strategic approach to having them, uh, actually here in our county. And as partners, they are agriculture. They grow a plant, it grows, they have a product that they harvest, and agriculture continues to thrive in Monterey County and is a, is a trusted partner in all of these efforts, especially through these funds, which I know Supervisor Adams protects them in her coin purse, as she said earlier. But, you know, without them continuing to do their business, employ people at the same time, and giving back to our community, we would not be in this position today to have this opportunity in front of us. So, I did wanna make that key highlight as we move over to public comment. I wanna remind the public, this is an opportunity for you to share your thoughts with us regarding this item. Please use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen. Uh, we asked if you're using a landline, you punch star nine or a cellphone. That'll raise your hand and let us know you wish to be recognized. We're gonna give two minutes per public speaker. I'll take them in order that I see on my screen. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and start with Rick Aldinger. Rick, you, uh, have the ability to unmute yourself. Please go ahead and do so and share your two-minute public comment with this board.
Uh, thank you, Chair Lopez. Uh, first of all, I wanna apologize for confusing the, the two agenda items, uh, and speaking on this item, uh, uh, during the previous item. But I'm also very pleased, uh, to see, uh, the, the supervisors taking my suggestion, uh, to, uh, support a six-month period rather than the three. Um, and, uh, you know, seriously, though, it, uh, I'm, I'm, I am really pleased to see the support of, across the board here for this program, uh, the, the support that it so much deserves. Uh, it, it is the right program at the right time, targeting the right audience, and, uh, all of the right people are in place here. Uh, it's, it's, uh, our best opportunity for success here and to really make a difference and, uh, protect the, the, the health and safety of our communities. Uh, and so, I, I do, uh, I, I urge the supervisors to take action today and to, uh, approve a six-month period for this program. And I would also just urge you to do that, uh, with urgency, the, the urgency that this program, uh, necessitates and deserves as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. I'm gonna go to CCA next. I don't know if it's Daniel Sabino, Joel, but I see CCA on our screen. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Uh, hi.
Hello.
Do you li- do you listen to me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Th- this is Sabino Lopez. Uh, I'm a deputy director of the CCA Center for Community Advocacy. CCA has been a wor- an organization working for two years on, uh, Monterey County Pajarali, helping farm workers to improve housing conditions and health, and develop, develop a leadership through the, to the area. So, we have really big connection with our community. And then, uh, so, we are, actually, we've been working now, providing some services on, on this area, COVID information, education. So, I think so this is another better opportunity to increase our capacity and, and support to, to provide the information and education to our community like we did in the census 2020. So, we are here to, to recommend and, and ask for your support for the option, uh, number two, six months. So, I think six months are very important, because we wanna have more time to, to prepare and coordinate together to, to have a good plan for the next, for the whole six months, I think so. And then to recruit the new, the new help promoters to work in this, uh, in this project. So, thank you very much for your support. Thank you, board supervisors, members, and the Community Foundation to be with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabino. We appreciate it. I'm gonna go to Norm Groot next. Norm, you're next up. I'm gonna go ahead and give you two minutes to share a public comment with this board.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair Lopez and supervisors. Good afternoon. This is Norm Groot for Farm Bureau Monterey, and I'm gonna speak in support of the COPA proposal and the pro- program. Uh, in the past, as you're all aware, ag has supported and participated in multiple collaborative efforts since March, including the acquisition and distribution of PPE to farm workers. We led on the farm worker advisory document, the first of that kind in California, and the isolation of housing program that was developed by the Grower Shipper Association. Those are all great efforts showing the leading edge that Monterey County has been on to this date, and we need to continue that. And Farm Bureau is going to participate and is participating in the convening process with the Community Foundation of Monterey County. We support the programs and the principles of inclusion and the collaborative effort that is going to be put forth through this program, and particularly the equity for all our residents of Monterey County. We also support the funding for six months, in that it provides program consistency. We all know that COVID is going to be with us for much longer than three months at this point, even as a strong rollout of, of vaccine comes along. It's still going to be quite a while before that's distributed. We need to make sure we have the right messaging in our community, and this effort will help to do that. So, we urge your support today for six-month funding for this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. We appreciate your comment. I'm gonna go to Andrea Manzo next. Andrea, you are gonna be given the ability to unmute yourself. We ask that you share your two-minute public comment with this board now.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Andrea Manzo, and I am with Building Healthy Communities. Um, BHC is in support of the six-month, um, 4.9 million dollar proposal, um, that was developed following the meeting from the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to hear that the six-month timeframe resonates with all of you. Um, as mentioned, you know, it's necessary for the CBOs to have the time to build the necessary infrastructure to ma- maximize effectiveness and impact. And so, following that last Board of Supervisors meeting, um, BHC, along from leaders from Mocadres en Accion, have been at the testing sites and connecting with families. And we have leaders that have been working in South County, Salina, Seaside, and Castroville, and these leaders have already identified, um, you know, families and supported them by navigating the resources, although it has been clear that there is inequitable access to these resources by those desperately impacted by COVID. Um, and so, as mentioned, this can serve as an infrastructure, um, that will be valuable, not only as we think about, uh, decreasing the spread, but also in the rollout of the vaccination. And so, as valuable messengers, um, that will be doing this work and putting, and putting themselves at risk, we, we need to ensure that the project is invested in accordingly. And so, to answer your question, Supervisor Lopez, you know, having a reduction in something such as administrative costs would impact our ability to do the work more effectively. And so, I urge, um, you all to, to support. It sounds like it's, it's happening, but I urge you to support the six-month proposal, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. I'm gonna go to Deacon Warren Hoy next. Deacon, will you be given two minutes to share your public comment with this board? You should now be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Deacon Warren Hoy, and I'm the Director of Family Life and Social Justice Ministries for the Catholic Diocese of Monterey. Um, as Supervisor Lejo mentioned earlier, Bishop Garcia strongly supports this proposal, as it focuses on the most vulnerable people in our area. Um, I wanna begin by thanking the supervisors for your attention to the challenges faced by our farm workers and other low-income workers, uh, in dealing with COVID-19. Um, our community needs action now, and today's meeting is a promising step. Um, I strongly endorse the current proposal, and speaking up for the diocese endorse this current proposal. Uh, this model is a proven approach, and this plan makes appropriate modifications to, to address our community's specific circumstances. Our workers need to be able to get tested without fear of losing their jobs, isolate without fear of losing their homes because of lost wages, and quarantine without fear of losing access to their families. This proposal addresses those needs and presents real, workable solutions. needs and presents real, workable solutions. Because this model has already been shown to work, the county should act decisively now and adopt it wholeheartedly. I hope you will choose to fund this program for the full six months recommended in the proposal by COPA. And it sounds, from what the board has been saying, that that is, you're leaning that way, and I'm certainly glad to hear that. Because with cases spiking and vaccines still months from being fully available, now is not the time for half-measures. Please approve this program for the full six-month period. So thank you again for your attention to this critical matter.
Thank you, Deacon. We're going to go to Antoinette Garrosch next. Antoinette, we're going to go ahead and give you the ability to unmute yourself. You should have two minutes now to share your public comment with this board.
Thanks, thanks a lot. I'm really glad to hear the supervisors. Oh, I'm a Salinas resident, just representing myself, really. I'm glad to hear that the supervisors are recognizing the need for a coalition grassroots-based approach to the crisis going on. And I, I just wanted to encourage them to really stick to your guns with the need for oversight. The, you know, kind of line items for administrative costs that don't have specifics attached to them can become a problem in moments of crisis like this. And I would love to see us be a model for, you know, coming out with a better system out of this emergency, rather than one that is worse and exacerbating inequalities and kind of existing injustices. Though, while I'm, I'm really actually quite hopeful at everything I've heard so far today, I'm also a little bit skeptical. And so, I, I hope to just keep an eye on things, that you will keep an eye on things, keep transparency, keep accountability. That's it.
Thank you, Antoinette. We appreciate your public comment. I'm going to go ahead and go to Adriana Santana next. Adriana, we're going to give you two minutes to share your public comment with this board. You should now have the ability to unmute yourself.
Mi nombre es Adriana Santana de Mujeres en Acción. Soy una de las community health workers. La semana pasada, me, me encontré con una familia de seis personas donde papá que trabaja en el campo se infectó de COVID. Y por no tener los recursos, no pudo aislarse y contagió a su esposa. El empleador le dijo que solo le pagaría una tercera parte de sus salarios. Y aunque lo refería a CIRLAE, no pudieron conseguir que le pagaran las dos semanas completas por el tamaño de su compañía. Así que no tenían dinero ni quién les llevara comida para aislarse. Cuando hablé con ellos, no tenían leche para los niños, ni pañales para, para la bebé. Yo pude llevarles lo que necesitaban. De otra manera, ellos hubieran tenido que salir aún sabiendo que estaban infectados. Porque ningún padre puede dejar a sus hijos sin comer. Y en nombre de la comunidad, doy gracias por, por escuchar la voz de, de la comunidad.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to get a quick translation on that for us.
Disculpa, ¿me puede aclarar con qué organización está? Adriana?
Adriana?
I'll give the gist.
Si, ¿me escucharon? Disculpen.
Sí, ¿me puede aclarar con qué organización está?
Maybe we should move forward and translate what we can.
Okay, yeah. So I'm with an organization, and I met a family who was affected by COVID.
Disculpen, si me escucharon.
Sí, les escuchamos. Gracias. Ya lo vamos a traducir. Había una cuestión de cuál organización trabajabas, con cuál organización trabajabas.
I met a family that was affected by COVID. They worked for the fields, and unfortunately, their employer stated that they're too small that they cannot cover for their mistimed pay. Also, the family did not have the resources to go out. They were missing diapers, they were missing food. A family should not have to go without feeding their children. Unfortunately, I was able to give them the things that they needed, but they needed to know where the resources are for them.
And Adriana is with Mujeres en Acción, or Women in Action, which is a group that works within the community and is part of this proposal. Thank you. So we're going to go to Jackie Hernandez next. Jackie, we're going to give you the ability to unmute yourself. You have two minutes to share a public comment with this board.
Buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por esta oportunidad. Nuevamente, mi nombre es Jacqueline Hernandez, y yo quiero hacerles un comentario acerca de una persona que estoy muy cerca de ella. Ella fue infectada del COVID en julio de este año. Después, ella siguió trabajando por miedo de que le quitaran su sueldo y pues la corrieran de su trabajo. A los cuatro meses, su niño se ha infectado de dos años y medio, el cual este, lo lleva al hospital y le dijeron que era, era positivo el niño. Se tenía que quedar en cuarentena, pero nuevamente hizo, no hizo caso de las recomendaciones médicas y se volvieron a quedar en casa. Y no se pudo quedar en casa por lo mismo, por miedo de perder su trabajo y por miedo de que no le pagaran su, su dinero. Ella siguió trabajando, y hace dos semanas, su hija volvió a ser positivo por los síntomas que su hija tiene, y vuelve a lo mismo. No llevó a la niña que se hiciera la prueba del COVID, y por miedo de, de que no le paguen en, en su trabajo y perder su trabajo. Ella es mamá soltera de cuatro hijos. Y pues, es todo lo que les quería comentar. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Jackie. And we're going to quickly get a translation from our services here in chambers. One second.
Hello, I'm Jacqueline Hernandez. I want to tell you a story about a woman that I know that was affected by COVID. She was positive in July, but continued to work. She feared that she'd lose her job and lose wages. Four months later, her child was sick with COVID, and again, she did not stop working. Two weeks ago, her daughter was positive again, and did not even take her to get tested because she had fears of losing her wages and losing her job. She's a single mother of four.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and head down to Marisela Acevedo. Marisela, we're going to give you the ability to share your comments now. You should have the ability to unmute yourself. You have two minutes.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Marisela Acevedo, del Grupo de Mujeres en Acción, líder de COPA. También formo parte a la comunidad para hacerles las llamadas. Y ahí tengo la historia de la familia Rodríguez. Ellos fueron informados con COVID. Ellos me buscaron para pedir ayuda de aislamiento, ya que en su casa viven dos familias y no querían contagiar la otra familia. Yo sabía que in King City hay unas trailers para aislamiento. Hablé al 211 para pedir información, un número de teléfono para poderles dar a la familia. Y el 211 me dijo que ellos no tenían esa información. Y entonces yo hablé a la clínica La Memorial, y me dijeron que hablar al condado. Entonces yo también marqué, mandé al, marqué al condado, y tardaron mucho tiempo para contestarme. Pero me dijeron que dejara mi número de teléfono y que ellos me regresaran la llamada para darme la información de dónde se podían aislar. Pero esa llamada nunca llegó. Este, me, tardé como tres horas haciendo las llamadas para poder tener la información para dárselas a la familia, y no les pude dar ningún tipo de información. No pude ayudar a esa familia porque no encontré la ayuda en ningún sitio. Y solamente hablé para, a la familia para decirles que yo estaba trabajando en todo lo que podía, pero no encontré respuesta a lo que ellos me pedían. Gracias.
Gracias, Marisela. All right, we're going to go to our translator here in a minute. Give her a second to straighten out her notes and give our translation.
Hello, I'm Marisela Acevedo, with Mujeres en Acción, COPA, and I also make calls to the community. I would like to talk to you about the Rodríguez family who was affected by COVID. They were COVID-positive, and reached out to me to find out where they can isolate, for they lived in a home of two families. I knew that King City had trailer homes, so I reached out to 211, and they told me that they did not know of any service such as that. I also contacted Mi Memorial, and they told me I had to contact the county. I contacted the county, and it took me three hours to make these calls. The county asked for my number and told me they'd call me back. I did not receive a call back. I had to contact the family back and let them know that, though I was trying to help them, I did not get the information needed.
Thank you. We're going to go to Susanna next. Susanna from CCA. We're going to give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Good afternoon. My name is Susanna Barrios, an organizer for the Center for Community Advocacy, and for months, CCA has been working on connecting with residents and providing them with necessary information about local resources. Throughout our work, we have noticed the impact this virus has brought among our most vulnerable communities. And for this reason, I am happy to hear we have your support, and we look forward to continuing to work and have more coordinated efforts with other organizations and work with you to implement the community proposal for six months. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Susanna. We're going to go to Sarai Martinez next. Sarai, we're going to give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, board chair and members. My name is Dr. Sarai Martinez, and I'm the Executive Director with Centro Binacional para el Desarrollo Indígena Oaxaqueño, which is a nonprofit that works with indigenous communities from Oaxaca and other parts of southern Mexico. Our main office is in Fresno, and we have an office in Madera. And also for the past, I believe, like even 10 years, we've been working in South County, in Greenfield and King City. And now, I've been doing work in the Salinas Valley and realize that there's a, a really need of services for our indigenous communities here. As you all know, we have about 165,000 indigenous farm workers, and from those, 46% work in the, in the Central Coast. And our indigenous communities is disproportionately impacted by COVID. Even preliminary studies by UC Berkeley researchers shows this, that indigenous farm workers are more likely, or are a higher risk of transmissions. And CBDIO is doing this type of work. We have 10 CHWs, actually, in Fresno, speaking seven different indigenous languages and working with farmworker communities there. Because there is, as we have discovered here in Salinas, when the Monterey County, a huge barrier of language in accessing services, not only about quarantine support, but actually from even accessing testing sites. So I'm here to really urge for you to support the six months, and not for us to do this work for free, but to really look at the administrative costs that really will help us get our work off and running, and really to support the indigenous communities which work and provide for this rich agriculture in, in here in Monterey. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Lorena Núñez next. Lorena, we're going to give you the ability to unmute yourself. You have two minutes to share your public comment with this board. Lorena? Lorena, we need you to unmute yourself. Okay, last call, Lorena. All right. See, no action and no further hands up. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. I see a hand up from Supervisor Alejo.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I want to make the motion, but I'll defer to Supervisor Adams' motion. I'd like to make the second on that, and then I'd like to speak on the motion.
So, okay, so Supervisor Adams, we're, we're at that point, if there's no other questions from the board, I think the one piece that I'd like to see included is just that Supervisor Alejo talked about on the, you know, the, the administrative cost portion. I think if 10% was good at three months, I'd like to see 10 at six and put that extra money up into the stipend and community support bucket where I think it's needed. Supervisor Adams, you with us?
Maybe she's too great.
I am definitely with, I'm definitely with you. And was just asking whether you wanted to settle on a compromise at 12% for the administrative overhead, since it was 10 and 15.
Well, it, it's on you in the motions, the supporter, I guess, to bring that forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I was having a little bit of trouble trying to capture the, the beginning of the, of the motion, actually. Looking at this, at the staff recommendation, I'm unclear whether I am making a motion to support the, the proposal from the community foundation for the COPA initiative, which has been endorsed by the community foundation, for the expansion of essentially the pilot program that has been in existence, to fund it for a six-month timeframe, and to have the funding come $1 million from contingency, $1 million from the strategic reserve, and 2.9 million from the cannabis account. The motion also includes the request to have monthly presentations of review, so that we'll be able to monitor and course correct as needed. There also would be a restatement of the administrative overhead for the small CBOs doing the work to 12%. And this motion acknowledges the real-time urgency that we're facing with the COVID initiative, the COVID pandemic, and the expected success from a community-based approach to resolution.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments from supervisors?
Yes, Mr. Chair, first of all, I want to commend all my colleagues, each and every one of you, for your courage and your leadership at a, at a critical time. As we were in this meeting, you know, the governor just texted or tweeted out that 672 vaccines of Moderna are arriving to California this week. We're really at a, at a critical time in our state, where finally, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. Vaccines are coming in. It's starting with Phase 1 by, by prioritizing our healthcare workers and our, our seniors in, in our, in our care homes. But then, in the next few months, it's going to be the rollout of the Phase 1B, which is a universe of eight million Californians, essential workers primarily. And we hope that with this, what we're laying down here today will help us have a successful story and a vaccination rollout in our county. Certainly, we've been the first in many ways on a lot of issues. The first on farmworker N95, the firmer, first on farmworker priority vaccinations, the first on farmworker priority testing back in April. I mean, we've done so many good things, and it's only been possible because each of you have been willing to lead and set the example as the local government, that even though we're, we're, in local government, we could set, you know, the model for other local governments to follow. And, and because we know we cannot be laying back, we cannot just be hoping for the best. We have to take decisive action and then put in our limited dollars where we know we can best do it. This proposal today is just that, it is engaging with the community, it's hearing from the community, and it's really trying to give those resources to those residents who need it the most, our most challenged census tracks and neighborhoods. This is what, what we're going to be able to accomplish, and that we hope that as we monitor this program, that we are having success, that we're helping turn things around, that we're helping residents who otherwise are afraid to quarantine and get resources, or afraid about not knowing the rights for sick leave, that we can provide those resources so that they can quarantine, that they can get paid, and they can have some alternative housing sites we needed. This is what it's about. It's about giving that real follow-through to everyday residents who, who we know. to everyday residents who, who we know are falling through the cracks. And we hope that at the end of this, in a few months, when, when the vaccination is rolling out, that we could look back and we could reflect that we, we did the right thing, that we had some success because we were able to put our dollars where our words are. And I think that's what the community wants from us. Uh, everybody that I've heard from, uh, is excited that this is going to move forward. And, but we want it to be successful too. And so for all our community partners, we hope that we, we work hard, we, we reach the milestones and the measurements so that we, we can really have a good story to tell the community, that we, we did this together. Um, and we know that that's the only way we're going to have success. With government, it cannot do it alone. It has to be working and hearing and engaging with the community. And this, what, this is what we're gonna, the, the action that we're gonna take today. And so I just want to really commend my, my colleagues for really being courageous at this most difficult moment in our nations and, and in our Monterey County's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm gonna go to Supervisor Parker next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I also want to echo the kudos to staff, community partners, um, and the, and our, and my board colleagues for doing, doing the work that we hope is going to make the kind of difference in our community that, that we need. Um, I'd like to just, uh, give a, a couple of specifics about the, that I hope the maker of the motion agrees is compatible with the motion. I, I think maybe so. So, um, you mentioned, um, monthly updates. I think it's going to be important for this board in January to, um, have that report, uh, include a refined budget, um, details about governance, uh, the Healthy People Index census tracts that we're focusing on, um, a detailed operational plan, uh, specific metrics for tracking our progress, and, um, an initial list of the community-based organizations, uh, that we're, that we're partnering with. As, as much as is in place at that time. I know some of it is going to still be in process, but I think we're saying yes, uh, but we really don't have any details about what we're saying yes to. Um, and we're, uh, we have strong community partners, and so we're, we're trusting that that work is going on. And I think it's important that at, at the earliest opportunity, we have, um, a lot more specifics. Um, it sounded like, uh, Dan Baldwin said that in February there will be, um, some ability to maybe further refine the budget and maybe even, um, talk about some of the, um, adjustments that might need to be made in terms of the, the approach. Um, and I think in March, it would be helpful, uh, maybe mid-March, to return to the board with, you know, uh, some, some actuals. How much money has been spent, on what? Um, how are we doing on the metrics? Um, what philanthropic funding is, has appeared or, or might appear, uh, seems to, you know, is, is being talked about. Um, and of course, any recommendations for adjusting the program. And then, uh, you know, a, a more experience-based budget for the, uh, following, um, three, three months. So, those are just some specifics on the, on the monthly, um, reports. And I would say, you know, each of those should include, I mentioned metrics, uh, once or twice, but I think each month we need to know, how are we doing on the metrics? What are they and how are we doing? Um, also, just in general, um, I'm sure we are doing this, but reaching out to, um, Nosiman, um, and, um, Mr. Heberly for any insights and, um, clues they can offer about, um, funding sources from the, uh, couple of, um, uh, from the, the state level, um, or the, or the federal. Um, and that, uh, with that, I, I am really pleased to, this, this whole discussion is great, and the direction we're moving, I think, is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to make one more clarification here. Supervisor Adams, you did, uh, say 12%, but what wasn't stated was that the 3% difference would go into, uh, that community stipend and support line. So, would that be part of your motion? Just clarifying.
I, um, I, do you feel like we want to absolutely say that you wanted to go into the stipend? What if, you know, what if housing is a, you know, housing is a bigger issue? Perhaps we could say that it would have to go into, um, whatever the, uh, the people who are running the program feel is the most needed, uh, uh, part at the time. You know, the most needed, uh, element of the project. If you want to say stipends, I'm good with that. I just want to make sure that we don't deny anybody's...
So, stipend is the catch-all, which does cover housing, food, diapers, et cetera. It, that's what the, the item is for.
Definitely.
So, I'm just saying into that, that bulk of items, rather than operating expenses or personnel, et cetera.
Yes, I'll, I'll accept that.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Supervisor Alejo, are you okay with that clarification?
And also with, uh, the clarifications Supervisor Parker stated to get that information sooner in January rather than later.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to CAO for comment.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. That was one of my questions. Uh, I would just also point out that we will, uh, bring back, uh, not bring back, it, we'll, we'll incorporate these changes into a revised resolution for, um, signature by the chair, uh, so that we don't have to come back to a future meeting with any, uh, future or, or new resol, new resolution. Just want to make that clear. Uh, and also in response to Supervisor Parker's question about finding other funding sources, uh, Mr. Heberly, uh, our federal lobbyist is already on top of that and, uh, has already indicated there may be some, uh, sources in this, uh, new federal bill, even though there isn't any, uh, direct local government aid like the CARES Act was. There may be some, uh, there may be some availability of monies in this, in this current, or this, um, uh, new federal bill that's coming out.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you. So, we're at the point now that it's time for a vote, and so I'm gonna go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, with that, we do have, we've concluded our work for the day, but I'm gonna turn to Supervisor Phillips for an adjourned in memory of Supervisor Phillips. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's, uh, today we asked, uh, our board to adjourn in memory of Carlo Cortipassi. Uh, he was a big leader in the Casterville community, and, and as we talking today and, and past about immigration and people coming to the country and things. I mean, he's the example of the immigrant that comes to our country and really does something. He was born, uh, January 1st, 1932. He died, uh, December 14th, 2020. He was 88. He was born in Massarossa, Italy, immigrated to the United States in 1954, where he went to night school to learn English, became a US citizen. Uh, with his wife, Anna, they owned and ran, uh, Casterville Plumbing since 1961, uh, when, uh, Anna's grandfather, uh, who started the business in 1934, retired. In 1990, Carlo became a restaurant owner, uh, when he opened, uh, Squella, uh, Castor, in Casterville. He owned quite a bit of other things around, and, uh, he was very involved in the Rotary Club and was district governor in 1987. And we didn't have it here, but I was at some event when he was recognized as the Citizen of the Year, uh, a number of times. He was very involved in the community and was on the board of various groups in the Casterville area. He leaves behind his son, Paul, daughter Cindy, grandchildren, um, and a great-grandchild. So, uh, our community in Casterville, he was, uh, one of those people that, uh, you always knew, always recognized, and he, anytime you needed something for the community, he was there. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Phillips. With that, we are adjourned.
Okay, the left side, the left...